I guess it is time to go. So if we could all rise and pledge the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe I'll roam for a minute because I forgot our first rule. With Panda here, I'm going to get to a remote mic. One of our technical changes with Panda was to get better sound. We now go right through the PA system in the back of the house. So the pledge is probably, in that case, was a little dim and hard to hear because we were all standing away from our mics. So it's a reminder to our board, we have to speak into our mics and speakers from the audience, just grab this and you do have to speak into this to get into the camera correctly. All good. While I'm up, it looks like we have one trustee absent tonight and a pretty good crowd here looking around and sampling before the meeting. I think they're here to talk about Panda, which is the acronym for public access television here locally. I think if the board is okay with it, we'd move to that first and we allow you to stay for the whole meeting if you so choose, but if you don't, you can feel free to leave. That being said, today is June 12th. I think Panda will now date stamp our meeting, right? So everybody knows that that watches, but 6:12. We always look at the numbers here and it's a nice time. I think six months ago, we were around the winter solstice. Now we're moving into the summer solstice. And in village rule and village law, we just moved off our fiscal year, May 31st, so we're 12 days into our new budget year, which is big stuff for us. So those of you that think finances and things, that's something in our head too. That being said, let me roam back to my seat and get going properly. What we could do is just start with some of our regular business. And if I get my mic closer, I'd like to review the minutes with the board. This time we did circulate them digitally and they were sent out last week. I reviewed them for any additions, alterations, and I would welcome any other additions, alterations, or corrections. Is there, are there any? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion that we approve the May 8th and then the workshop minutes of May 11th.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And again, since this is the formal business meeting of the board, and as I mentioned, our fiscal year did just end, I would like to just start off with the treasurer giving, she has two reports for the board there. One is the year-end numbers and then where we sit as of June 12th in 2017. So Cindy, you ready to talk about that?
Okay, year-end totals, May 31st, 2017. Account balances. General fund, $247,930.25. Water fund, $104,218.07. Trusted agency, $31,321.31. Materials management, $3,255.18. Petty cash, $32.20. Village Green, $4,136.88. Hardscrabble, $6,189.34. Health insurance, $3,588.19. And capital projects expended, zero. Monthly expenses and all the bills are paid up to this point. General fund, $79,632.28. Water fund, $20,546.37. Trusted agency, $31,321.31. And materials management, $3,414.92. And the next treasurer's report is dated today, the 12th, and these are just balances and expenses from June 1st to the 12th. So it's just 12 days. And I am collecting taxes. General fund, $418,230.91. Water fund, $101,474.49. Trusted agency, $3,229.87. Materials management, $6,021.20. Petty cash, $32.20. Village Green, $4,136.88. Hardscrabble, $6,369.34. Health insurance, $11,497.60. And monthly expenses, general fund, $168,660.65. Water fund, $12,161. Trusted agency, $32,229.87. And materials management, $885.98.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions on the current one, June 1st to June 12th. $168,000, are there some big expenses sitting in?
Yeah, insurance. Marshall and Sterling was in there.
And for everybody's reminder and notification, if you go back to the fiscal year-end numbers, the general fund, the $247.9, lest anyone think that that's a one-year surplus, that's really includes our unallocated fund balances in there. So it's actually telling me, you know, that the year, net year, is probably about a net zero up or down as far as, but like we all know, we now bring in our accountants and our controller and we do the AUD, which we owe the state comptroller's office, and these get fine tuned. And a lot of those year-end bills that came in early June and everything has to be cross-referenced back to the right fiscal year. So it's not like we finished with a new $247,000. That's our rolling fund balance here.
Actually, we have a lot of expenditures to come in yet, so that balance will be much higher. More is coming in that's going to go out.
I lost you there. Say it again.
The balance is up $247. I have not received chips.
Okay.
I have not received the pilot from the town. We're waiting for block grant money. So that's probably $60,000. And to my knowledge, there are no big bills that are going to be waiting to go out.
That's good. That's good news because this shows like a net reduction really in fund balance with that number. Okay, as we normally do, we want you all to look those over. The attaching documentation is really where the details are. I would say, let's go with two motions. We have the treasurer's report listed as May 31 fiscal year-end. I would entertain a motion that we accept that as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any thoughts or discussion?
I think we're doing pretty good here.
Yeah, it's, we had that scare with Storm Stella, whatever that was, March, when we were under, what, two feet of snow, whatever it was. And...
And we're just like, I don't know, 2% over on the snow budget, so it's, even with that storm, we're doing pretty good.
It does reflect, I think, the hard work this board has done for the past four to six years and that's all, that's what it reflects, and the staff cooperation and so forth. But, so anyway, we had a motion, a second on the fiscal year-end. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the one 12 June, which is just sort of a, sort of a short-term interim number here, we'll get a better number at the end of June at our July meeting. But is there a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. So like we said, I think what we can do is, we have a normal set of agenda here, but we'll move out of department and committee reports and out of fairness to those in the audience, put on our regular business items, which we plan to discuss tonight with Panda dash updates. So I see a lot of Panda-related faces, I think, out there. I see town faces, I see, most of them are smiling, which is kind of good. But anyway, I could lead off and then we could let those that want to say something, say something. From our perspective, we're one of five munis in Panda and rounding things, the budget has always been about $75,000 a year and it's prorated on cost or revenue, rather, from the franchises we receive from now Spectrum. This village has always prided itself on trying to get the message out. We've always been, in my opinion, before trying to get anything we can out there to the public. For whatever reason, we don't get a lot of attendance at our meetings. We have our, we call them our backbenchers, back there, our regulars, who bring their input and thoughts to us all the time. But, and I've not ever been convinced that Panda's the only sole best way to get it out there either. In our case, it boils down to, in the old budget meeting, we'll explain that further in a minute, but it costs the village about $12,000 a year to host Panda or pay our share of the five municipal allotment of what Panda spends per year. And like I said, it's based on revenue we get. The reason, the way Panda allocates its budgets is based on the spectrum customers in the five municipalities. We think in the modern age, and I still think that TV is probably moving out of date, and I think even on our board, we have people that are not Spectrum customers, not cable customers of any sort. And I know in the town of Red Hook, there are physical places where people cannot even get cable, so they can't be counted in the spectrum count to generate the allocation. And we're trying to address that. And we do think that there are newer platforms. And my latest thinking though is that it doesn't necessarily exclude or preclude Panda. I think the platforms exist, meaning internet digital, which would be YouTube and different sources linked to our websites, Panda's website. But I think we still need the hardware side, somebody to film, somebody to organize that part of it. But I still, I do think the distribution is a problem. We hear anecdotally how many people see us. We survey periodically ourselves. We don't really get any big numbers that people complain, excuse me, wrong word, people affirm that they have seen us on Panda or that they watch Panda. The YouTube part, we can see sampling and numbers and so forth, but to bring this board up to date, I circulated something. I think it was this weekend, we got a note from the Panda representative, we work with, Mark Durand, that included the wording of a new contract. And I think the contract's probably, what, 40 pages thick? I have it in my pack here. Pardon me? Twenty-eight? Yeah. And I was starting to make some review, but the board has not had a chance to see it. It just came in. Yeah. But in our case, historically, we've been given one meeting a month filmed and we've had some talk with other munis. And this board is aware, we did have a five muni meeting recently with Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck meaning Town of Villes, Rhinebeck, Tivoli, Red Hook, and Town of Red Hook. And on the upper side, Spectrum is renewing its mother franchise agreement with all the entities at a 5% of gross revenue rate, which in our case means certain dollars. But we've taken a position, and I'm convinced it's correct, that the revenue generated from Spectrum is not tagged or earmarked to fund Panda. It's revenue to the village of Red Hook to fund whatever the village and its village board decides needs to be funded. And that's the problem. We've been living in the tax cap world and the public thinks it's a 2% tax cap, but we all know it's .12, .68. You know, it's never been 2%, I think, since the first year it was rolled out, five years ago. So we've been hard pressed and always looking for work. Can we save money? Can we do things better? And we do think there's a better way to get the word out. And so anyway, the contract was circulated today. The numbers are, it's essentially, if one rounds it, it's $73,000. And our numbers are about $10,935, call it $11,000. So it's $1,000 less. We all know on this board what we budgeted. And quite frankly, we're looking, we're looking to move, we're calling it digital communication, and we're looking to improve our website, where we do think that is the future. We need the meetings out, not just on TV, and it has to be in as many forms and platforms as we can find. And like we all know, there's no local news. As much as we love Panda, and we're policy wonks, most of us that run for office and sit in office, but I cannot imagine how somebody could watch a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour village board meeting on Panda. I mean, so we, this past Friday, had a little session where we, there's a company out there called Exella, where they actually do live streaming of meetings. And you can get, for $5,000, they give you, I'll call it a box, I'm not a super techno person, but we still need a laptop and a few things, which get into some operational issues, quite frankly, between me and my board. It's, it's not as clean as having a cameraman sitting in the back. You still need a cameraman or a camera person to have this box. But it does live stream and then it archives it. And in that case, we have to buy our own camera, pay a camera person. But then my mind went toward, well, what if Panda got also into live streaming? That might be more interesting. I don't know how it conveys up through TV23, through Spectrum, but just using a digital platform could be, I think it might generate more interest, quite frankly. If people wanted to, they could sit home and watch and then turn us off. But, but with that in mind, we looked at it, we didn't make any commitment. It's, quite frankly, even $5,000 is more than we, than I think it's probably worth, you know, but it's something to think about. We're, tonight, we wanted to hear from the Panda side of the world again. And I, I just want to state a few things. We went through this drill about a year ago and then this weekend I had what I would call a brainstorm. I circulated it to some board members and to some other munis the past day or two. In a way, I think it's a false accounting to only use the Spectrum customer count to allocate the costs. I think if a town of Red Hook resident now is not a Spectrum customer, but can go to YouTube on the Panda site or the, and grab and watch a meeting, in a way, they're getting it for free. So, and then the town of Red Hook and the more rural areas, they have far fewer percentage of customers that are able to get Spectrum. Whereas in the village, every, every person in the village can choose to be a Spectrum customer if they want. So I was thinking, well, is there a better way to allocate it? I'll tell you upfront, the two town supervisors immediately thought, probably not, because in a way, it would cost them more money. They've got the more customers that are getting, what I would call, in a sense, some free service right now. They can't watch the television, but they can grab it. And the question is, when you look at the YouTube, YouTube numbers, you don't see a lot of YouTube viewers, but still, that platform is out there. So I was looking for a way, how do you energize Panda, get the platform more exciting, and have the message get out there and somehow dilute, somehow reappropriate or reallocate the budget part of it? Because right now, our village, like you said, I think it's 696 Spectrum customers we have. It's listed in the contract there. The town itself only has like 1,200 and change, if I remember right, so, but the town has 8,000 folks and we only have 2,000 folks. So it kind of averages about three persons per household. So if you do, yeah, we have about shy 2,000 folks, so if you do, round us up to 700, that's 2,100 folks, which is about our population. Whereas the town, if you take them up, they have about 3,600 people that can watch Spectrum, that leaves them with about 5,000 that can pick it up in other sources or not get it at all. But anyway, I'm trying to see if we can break that link of Spectrum customer, because I'm not in the business of promoting Spectrum cable either. I think the village, in a funny way, you're forcing, if people do really want to see our meetings, they have to be a Spectrum customer and be in the allocation. Or if they say, no, I won't be, I'll take you off on the digital platform, then that raises the issue of people in the towns and things getting that for free again. So anyway, that's where we're at. And I don't think we're going to make a call tonight to, but the budget just, the contract and the budget just came in. I made some red highlights myself earlier today, but nobody else has. But you want to let them speak a little bit? And W O K, you guys, and I don't know who, but like we said, if you go to our mic and just say who you are, and, I think I left it on, so it should be warmed up.
Sure, I'll, I'll start. So my name is Eric Ryback and I'm a resident of the town of Rhinebeck, but I'm here because about five months ago, I joined the Panda board and became the chair. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, Mayor, and, and certainly, we, you know, we understand that some of the improvements that we've made are things that you've been suggesting to us, like the YouTube and all that. And I think we all have to look forward to emerging platforms, ways to get video or television distributed and those, and certainly, you know, things that we plan to look into our, we have a YouTube channel. Can we just also livestream our, our scheduled station on that? Because people can do live streaming on YouTube now. I don't know if you can do 24/7. That's one of the things we'll look at. You know, I'm, I'm a cord cutter. I, I would, you know, I'd love us to be available through Roku, Chromecast, all those things. So those are things that we want to look at. They all have some cost. And so right at the moment, we haven't been able to seriously look at it because we need to have our funding situation clarified. In terms of, you know, your suggestion about reallocating, rather than have a philosophical discussion with you, I would say that Panda's position is, we know what funding we need and it's really between you and your municipal partners as to how you accomplish that. I would just urge that we get this resolved really soon because we really need to know where we stand. You know, we've, you know, we, we have to dig hard into our budget, make sure we're living within our resources and, and frankly, we haven't been for the last half a year. You know, we've continued to do the meetings here because we, you know, we, we wanted to maintain what we were doing. And so, so we need to know, we need to get this resolved and really in terms of the funding, that's between you and your partners and the other municipalities. So I would say that's, that's our main issue. And I just also want to make the point, and I think you know it, that Panda is a lot more than just the meetings. You know, we have dozens and dozens of programs every month that are, come from the community, things that we, programs that we generate or coordinate. And, you know, anybody can put a program online. Anybody can have their own YouTube channel and put a TV show on TV. I think that it's important that we have in our communities, a hub, a channel, and that is either a scheduled flowing channel like a traditional TV, or it can be just like what we see on YouTube or those of us who use Netflix, where the programs are available and you, you choose to see them when you want. But we, we need to have that and, and it needs, to be effective. I think it needs to be managed, moderated, coordinated, promoted. So, so I think it's really important that we continue to have an entity, Panda, or some entity that puts this all together and that we, you know, look toward better ways to do what we're doing and to make it available to the public. And certainly no objection to having meetings available on multiple platforms. I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Yeah, as you mentioned, Ed, this goes back to last year and Panda has been in a state of trying to do more than it used to do in the last year, because of last year. Also in a state of limbo because of Spectrum. We don't, we need a Spectrum agreement and we need a new intermunicipal agreement. We determined after our meeting in October, Robert McKeon offered to get the municipalities together and to discuss both Spectrum and the municipal agreement. So we kind of took a bit of a backseat at that point to hopefully that the municipalities would be able to resolve this. We're here specifically because we're concerned from particularly the first email you sent me, Ed, that Red Hook Village might choose to drop out. And that would have repercussions on our budget, which is already strained. One of the reasons the budget became more strained this last year is because we did more without charging anybody. And we have to reevaluate that now. I do think one thing that, I mean, to the point about Spectrum and exclusion, I mean, when the 2011 agreement was done, we really weren't online. And the numbers have gone up to a large extent because of that online presence. You know, both the website and the YouTube channel. I think one year, one month period, the website was like eight to 10,000 hits. So what are people watching? Sure, they're watching a lot of things other than the board meetings, but they have the opportunity to watch the board meetings. And the board meetings, along with the programs, are now archived. So, no, they can't watch them live because it takes some time, it takes a week to get edited and, you know, put it back out there. But you can watch it for months, you know, on demand. And all of these things have had their costs, you know. Panda's had to upgrade in a number of ways and had to put in more hours and more volunteers and more stress on the station manager. And just in order to come in at a budget that now we're concerned about, we're looking at how we may have to cut back in some way. We have an offer and we would like to do it if, if we can financially make the numbers match, to move into Red Hook Village here. So we feel we're really a part of this, in a big way, actually, not a little way. And I did have Danielle, Danielle did some research and she came up with Red Hook Village related programs during the length of this last contract, this last five years. She's got 90 programs here. You know, in fact, she's got more programs related to Red Hook Village than any of the municipalities. And one last point about Northern Dutchess and how this whole franchise agreement, I think, what it was founded on in the early 90s, is obviously, if you're going to go to Sinterklaas, you may very well be from Red Hook Village. And you may want to see your kids or something at Sinterklaas. I mean, so it's, the municipalities aren't all perfectly confined in terms of events, you know, and programs or PSAs. You know, we did PSAs for the Hudson River on the Anquages. That was extra time, volunteer time, you know, and extra stress on the station and editing those pieces. We did one racing through history from the fairgrounds. We do, of course, the events like Hardscrabble Day. So, you know, I think that really in fairness, I've been here for, since I came on, it's been over 10 years, you know, that the efforts that are largely volunteer of this station, you know, to try and serve the community, both in terms of news and information, but also the culture, you know, and the experiences, I think it's served this community very well, and I think it serves all of the Northern Dutchess, and I think we share in that. There's a kind of shared services here that is, I think, the foundation of what this agreement is. And, you know, whether or not, originally, it was intended, the franchise from TCI originally was intended to go to a public access station. If that wasn't specified, I think it was kind of inherently understood and certainly the precedent is there. Precedent is there for the whole period of the duration of that time, which is quite a while. So anyway, this, I, I understand we're not expecting things to get resolved now because this is pretty complicated and there are a lot of other questions to be dealt with amongst the municipalities. And I would echo what Eric said, however, the municipalities would like to figure out what their share would be, you know, depending on whether it's number of customers or number of Spectrum, that's fine, that's really not our concern. But we do hope that you can figure it out and we hope it'll be equitable. I'd like to give this to Bill O'Neill for a moment, just...
Can I speak?
Pardon me?
Can I speak?
Sure, sure.
Well, Bill O'Neill, but as a member of the Red Hook Town Board, I'm here to speak on behalf of Panda. I'm not going to comment on the arguments pro and con for the village of Red Hook to sign on to the intermunicipal cooperation agreement revised for 2017, 2019. You've only got copies today, I understand. And as recently as today, there were exchange of emails with Panda about proposed changes to the agreement that the mayor initiated. I only want to say, as we all know, that one hand helps the other. The Northern Dutchess Alliance, the shared services initiatives of Duchess County and of our three municipalities in the town of Red Hook, the intermunicipal task force in the town of Red Hook with the village of Tivoli and the village of Red Hook since 2004, and many of you have been members of it, and even municipal training, which has been given to our community by Pace University Land Use Law Center. I think Jay was in that even, right? Everybody, everybody has been through that. So go back a little bit and focus on all of these aspects of running local government that I've just mentioned. And all of them point to and emphasize the cooperation among municipalities in running local government and achieving what's best for our citizens, in working together and not apart. Am I right? All of us know that from all of our training. So, you know, as you proceed to analyze the agreement, which again, goes way back to 2006, it's only revised up to 2017, 2019, but this is just not something new. We've been in this together for a long time. So when you look at what... So when you look at what your choices are and how you assess, you know, where the Village of Red Hook fits with the other, and I'm going to call them, there are five municipalities, but they're five partners, right? We're all partners in this inter municipal agreement with Panda. If the Village of Red Hook chooses to back out of this inter municipal cooperation agreement with Panda, it will be awful for the other four municipalities. It's simply not right. Our democracy is being challenged on the national level today and maybe even on the international level today with partners pulling out of agreements, as we know about. So what's left for us at the local level? It's to stick it out together in mutual respect. So let's renegotiate terms of this agreement or let's restructure the contributions along the lines that the mayor is talking about recently, if we must, but let's keep this agreement for all five municipal partners intact. We should be, all be in it together. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
I'll chime in on this.
We've got a time limit on here, Eric.
Don't I always? Hello, folks. I'll talk to you as well as this crowd up front. Um, I've, I've been involved in government here for some 15 years now. And, uh, an important part of that is communication. And, you know, when I, when I started in government, we had a stack of newspapers. There were, there was all sorts of resources to, to know what was going on. And, and today, there, we don't have a newspaper left. The only thing we have that tells me what other municipality is doing, is, uh, is Panda. And, uh, if you have a computer, you have access to Panda. And I doubt there are many houses in the municipal, in, in, in Red Hook, in this area that don't have a computer. They probably have many. Um, and, uh, you know, as being a member of a, a board here and I'm elected to a position, I often forget, believe it or not, what I said at a meeting. So, so it's very handy to, to go back to, to go to the computer and, and, and catch up. Uh, and that's something that the public can do. And, and I often see public on the street. They'll ask me a question. I have forgotten what I, what, what, what actually had happened and I tell them, go, go to Panda, go look up the meeting, look up the meeting of this date or whatever. It's, it is a, 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 our only resource left and it is, it is a very positive resource for the community. I, I know it costs a little bit, but it really doesn't cost a lot. It, in, in the context of, in the context of the cost of government in, in these five municipalities, it is, it, it's very small. And I think that we can, something that we can continue and should continue to fund in, in the context of open government. Thank you for listening. Next.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Care. I'm the chairman for the Senior Services Committee for the town of Red Hook. I've been the chair now, I think going on my seventh year. I was a member for that committee probably a good four or five years prior to becoming the chair. I'm going to speak briefly, but I'm going to speak sort of on two sides of the coin. One is being as a chair, but also on a personal note, uh, what I feel qualitatively why Panda is very essential as a resource for heightening awareness, sharing information that's important for the people that reside in our community. As chair of the Senior Services Committee, there have been countless, I mean countless projects, activities, um, that have really fallen many times in terms of communication that's come out of Panda to try and get the word out, um, from things from senior expos to Department of Dutchess County Sheriff's Office giving presentations on senior safety, to food drives, to specific office of the agent communications regarding pharmacological intervention for seniors, medical legal issues, on and on and on. I could actually almost guarantee you that every meeting of this nature that we've had at the, um, Town Hall, I could recall at least several people coming up to me and telling me that while we've had the meeting posted on our website links, while we try to get mailings out, their knowledge of these meetings was because of the public service announcements that was on Panda. And I think certain things you really can't measure quantitatively. You know, it's not about the thousands or 10,000s. When I look at what we do as a committee every day, I look at it qualitatively and with meeting and reaching five people, 10 people, three people, two people, that's five people, 10 people, three people, two people that have not have been reached for what I consider to be very vital information. So that's first. I'm not familiar with all the nuances in terms of contractual arrangements. I, I know, I think as well as everyone, that digital media is a way of the future. What I would encourage all municipalities though is to really try and explore ways to resolve this so that this vital resource does not disappear. On a personal note, Panda goes beyond just the recordings of meetings or public service announcements. Panda provides an opportunity from an academic sense. There, uh, the Red Hook High School and the Red Hook School District has a very vital communication program through Red Hook RHBC. Many students have an opportunity to be in Panda as interns to basically learn about what it's like to be involved in as a media broadcast station, um, using computerized technology, um, using editing programs, interpersonal interaction skills in terms of working with other individuals. On, on a personal note, uh, my son, who was very interested in broadcast journalism, approached Panda and he was an intern for Panda, I think, for most of his high school career. But he had asked them, with partially his support, but their equipment, that he wanted to cover the World Special Olympic Games in Los Angeles last summer. And with a lot of work and dedication on part of Panda and the staff, they made this happen. My son Jacob went out for a good two weeks. This was an event attended by 7,000 athletes from all over the world. And what it did is it brought back here some hundred hours of footage, really heightening awareness of what people with intellectual disabilities and developmental disabilities can do, far more than what anyone can imagine. Okay? So that to me is the other role, is that, you know, I, I look at the necessity of the common day-to-day information that we're all seeking, but Panda gives us a means of a supply, uh, an avenue of approach for the things that we're not aware of, for the things that might be surprising for us, the things that are going to heighten awareness, that we need to have, you know, a resource for. So, you know, in short, again, the nuance is contractual, digital, financial, et cetera, et cetera. I know that's left for the forces that be, but what I encourage you is to look qualitatively of what this resource has done for the community for all these years and do we want to have that resource extinguished? Do we want to have it absent? And it's not about quantity. I think it truly is about quality and that's what communication is. It's qualitative. You know, I, I know in terms of, you know, profits and looking at, you know, numbers, numbers are always important, but I think we got to consider the qualitative aspect here and that's what I would implore, you know, use in your positions to do so. Uh, thank you for giving me your time to hear my opinions.
Well, I think I'd like to, we've heard quite a few speakers. Aerodrome Man, you want to say something?
Sure thing. I'm here on several accounts and thank you Mayor Blundell, trustees for allowing me the time to speak. I am a, uh, my name is Carl Cipperly. I'm a volunteer over at Old Rhinebeck Aerodrome. I've been there for about 10 years. Uh, I am also a volunteer at Panda. I've been there for about two years. And I also, my father was a former politician who was involved with Panda as an, at its inception and he also wrote a little letter I'd like to share with you after. I just wanted to cut the chase. Um, I didn't want to beat around the bush on anything. For me, Panda is about usership. And what I mean by that is as a Village of Rhinebeck resident, I can go to the station and Danielle can let me use her computer, the camera and, uh, basically equipment that would otherwise cost me about $6,000. And I don't have that kind of money floating around for a good HD camera and the computer to churn out HD footage. Some of you might be familiar with a piece that I did last year on the Spirit of St. Louis. That was, um, a watershed event for the aerodrome. We'd been, we've been around since 1958, but from about the early 2000s till about five years ago, we were on a questionable path. And we have been coming back. We had a bit of a tragedy two years ago. We lost our gift shop museum in, uh, in a fire. But because of, uh, a little bit because of my, uh, my video and the Spirit of St. Louis gala that we had last year, plus the viewership, the attendance at Old Rhinebeck Aerodrome, we actually paid for most of that building. And that was an incredible turnaround. Uh, I myself, I think I'm just going to ballpark it. I probably have 15 videos relating to the aerodrome. And if most people don't know, even though the name Old Rhinebeck is in there, half of the aerodrome is in Red Hook. Uh, actually, most of it is. So again, for me, uh, to be able to come in just as, as a taxpayer or a user, to be able to use that equipment is so invaluable to me. I, I wouldn't be able to churn out any other work any other way. I've got a cheapy Windows computer that's just not powerful enough to handle the HD As I said before, my, my father was the former mayor of Rhinebeck, Pete Cipperly. He was there for 28 years. He was there at its inception, I believe in 1992. Just for a moment, I will share this letter with you. I am Pete Cipperly, who served two, two years as village trustee, 28 years as mayor and nine more years as highway superintendent for the Village of Rhinebeck. I was involved with the organization of Panda in the 1990s and served on the Panda Board on two different occasions. The original headquarters for Panda was in the stage of Rhinebeck Town Hall. TV broadcasts of town and village board meetings and other interesting subjects were done live. Mark Molinaro was mayor of Tivoli and did a weekly TV show called Tivoli This Week. When taping became available much more, was added to the daily programming and the headquarters was, location was changed two or three times. The cost of the operation was divided amongst the five municipalities involved, cost of equipment, rental of location and payment to the director of operations. People who covered the meetings were paid on a part-time basis. And believe me, no one was ever overpaid and much of what was done was more voluntary than by paycheck. That's also for me. Most, I, Danielle can probably tell you more about my volunteer hours than not. Not much has changed over the 25 years of operation. I've heard people complain about Panda being a waste of money, but is it? When I was mayor, we would have a minimum of four newspaper reporters covering our board meetings and as time went on, the newsprint media kept, just kept cutting back. But the last reporter was Jim Haviland of the Poughkeepsie Journal. And when the Journal closed its office doors on North Broadway in Red Hook, that was about it. Panda certainly has filled the void and is still, and the case is still filling the void. In the past, what happened to all these second-class politicians who were claiming that not enough transparency in government, or was this just a lot of hot air? I know most communities have a website and some means of getting the information out, but that is not the same as watching the real thing unfold on TV. And I can tell you, uh, my father watches all of the board meetings, village, town, Red Hook, Rhinebeck, Tivoli. Uh, he's a very avid viewer. The other issue is that many times people do not want to be held accountable for what they say or what you can deny or what you cannot deny on the TV tape. I've had the occasion to swear many times on Panda to emphasize a point and that may happen again in the future. Panda should keep it, Panda should keep, be kept in, in operation as it provides the communities with excellent publicity and is an excellent means of communication. If communities do not take advantage of, of it, tough, don't blame Panda. And again, thank you for your time here. And again, I, I did want to emphasize the point that being a user, it's, uh, being able to be, to use Panda is just such a resource and a lot more people should be doing that. So I would encourage people to drop in and see Danielle. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
Why don't we move on? I, I have a few thoughts. One thing I mentioned in my emails today out to Panda, the five munis was, it's an acronym that I think is somewhat outdated too, but it's PEG. It's, it's the, uh, when public television was first invented, it was perceived as a real cutting-edge thing and that was back 28, whatever years ago. PEG stands for Public Access Education and Government TV. And right now, like I mentioned in my email, we're the G. We're, we're being filmed and we're the, putting out the G's, we're the ones paying for it. Um, the public access is good. It's, it's really designed to have equipment and some talent for folks to make their own shows and put them up on Panda. In my opinion, that's sorely lacking, not any criticism of you. I have seen the Spirit of St. Louis, um, I'll go to YouTube to watch airplanes fly just in general, you know, but, uh, but when you did that, it was a good show. But, um, there's that. And then on the E side, Andrew mentioned his son. One of our models we're looking at is to have a mentor from the school actually use and get the high school talent here, do the camera work for us and then they would use it as credentialing for when they go on into their careers. So we're not ignoring that argument from the one speaker or the public access. I firmly believe the station does need more content. I think it needs, and it's never a criticism of Danielle or anything, it's just, it's, people just don't take advantage of it. I think, to our credit, I think we have something to, with Panda, like somehow we bug you guys the most, I think. This village just gets out and when we were having trouble years ago with sound quality, they, we, Danielle came in with folks and did certain things and we got that going. Production quality improved greatly after that. Then we got into some digital discussions and I think as a result, YouTube and the archiving and different things came in. And it's, I don't know if we can claim all credit, but we initiated a lot of it, those that were on the board for those years. I see this as another version of that. I think, um, there's, when I look at the numbers, you know, I put on our wall, that's our budget. This village used to be dead broke in 2010, 11, 12, and this board's brought it up. And one way is looking at, how do we spend our money? How do we get the best bang? And no way are we saying we're going to go dark, go blind, not have news, not have coverage. We're actually looking to do the opposite, trying to get more out there. So, um, you know, Jen had an idea, could Panda film school board of education meetings? When you think of it, our village taxpayer, they actually were a pretty small part of their tax bill. You know, it's, uh, say 15, $1,600 a year. The school's five, six, seven, $8,000, you know, for the typical homeowner. But right now, there's really no coverage of them. Could they be somehow drawn into the equation to help fund, um, something like that? We're just looking for a way to get the word out, be fiscally as responsive as we can be. We do see, you know, Panda could be that provider, but on a multi-base platform is what I'm seeing right now. And, um, we don't need, you know.
I think we have no argument with multi-base. And it's grown because of that. You know, we have more.
You need the microphone. Nobody will know what you're saying.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, um, we've been, uh, seeking to be as, uh, multi-platform as possible. And we've done, we've continued to do this every year. You know, uh, our only limitations are financial. You know, we tried to get the shared services grant last year for, uh, a program device that would have been able to, anything we did could have gone on your iPhone or anything immediately, streaming, whatever.
Okay, Mike, but we can move on, but just one last on that. Quite frankly, when I was looking at my reallocation model, I was thinking, I know you're on a starvation budget. I mean, it's, and nobody should exist on that. We've had, we quash I still exist on that. But, um, I think, well, what if you put some more dough into the budget and then reallocated on this other modeling number where you could really do stuff instead of like just barely, oh gods, you know, Danielle?
We would be very happy to discuss that.
But, you know, I look at the numbers, but anyway, we do have a regular meeting we should go on to, but we have a workshop Thursday night and we can talk some more as a board and things. Anyway, thank you all, Panda people.
Thank you.
We don't mean that in any bad sense, Panda people. Okay. As far as folks waiting, we have our engineer waiting here and he should go home too, right? He's had a long day. Why don't we, since we're broken out of agenda timeline here, um, when we take a two-minute recess, we'll let certain folks leave, board members get refreshed and we'll come back.
Get refreshed.
Okay, we're back. We took a brief recess after some discussion on Panda TV 23 and we're breaking the agenda a little bit. We have our engineer here and we want to talk about water phase two update status and then sewer. And then we'll let him move on and we'll move back to our regular agenda. So, Robert, would you like to talk, I think, water first? And mainly what I'm thinking is, we're in And mainly, what I'm thinking is, we're in June, things are almost done, we probably want to turn certain buttons to the complete stage and process to USDA and get the short-term closed out to long-term, but those are what I'm thinking from my world.
Right, so, um, yes, we've got, gonna give you an update on to the major projects. The, the water project, which is, you know, just about wrapped up, like you were saying, just a little update on the other major project we're getting going is the sewer. So on the water side, like you mentioned, we need to close that out formally. We have, you have two prime contractors. One is Jurson, which is GC, and you have Gross Electric, which is the electrical contractor. Jurson is most, is, I think is practically there, but maybe the board can start considering that. There's, they've done another round of hydroseeding. The grass is mostly grown up. There's still, there's still some properties that need additional attention with their lawns, but we do need to, you know, discuss, you know, formalize acceptance of their work. There's a lot of formalities have to happen because it's funded by EFC and Rural Development. We have to close it out. It's not like you can just, you know, issue a check and it's done. But one of the formal steps has to happen is the board has to make a resolution accepting Jurson's contract as complete, knowing that there, there is, you know, there might be a few punch items still out there. The way it stands right now, there's a final payment that's due to them, and they submitted mechanic liens and insurance and bonds, which is required by the paperwork. So, I don't know, the board needs to make a resolution tonight, but it's something they have to consider, you know, soon, to be fair to the contractor. If there is some outstanding issues out there, then that's the time to resolve them.
While we're talking about that, so really, we're talking about the retainage, right, which is $10,000, which is all we owe them. And then, when Robert Benson mentions resolution, it's, it's a little, like he said, it's formal, it's more than we could draft right here, it has to comport with the rules and wording that USDA would want. And in phase one, we did that, so there's a template out there. Would your firm craft that, or does bond counsel, who, who actually, it's, it's more than me just writing a resolution.
Yeah, it's, we, like I said, we have the, we have the, basically the template, because every contract that we did in phase one, we had meters, water meters contract, we had the well contract, we had the electrical contract, all those got resolutions to close them out. And we followed the template that was provided by Rural Development. So it's the same, same rules here. So we can, we can work with you to dig that up.
Because what I was half-thinking board was, we have a workshop this week, but it's Thursday, which is really close to today already, so I don't think, we probably would have the wording together even by Thursday. We could consider a special meeting, like someday, next week is what I was thinking, maybe when you're in town routinely, or, you know, thinking Wednesday or Thursdays. I'm not gonna set it at the moment, but are people, like at 7:00 PM on a, say, next Wednesday, or something where it gives the clerk time, and...
My daughter is graduating next month.
Graduating? So Thursday might...
I know, I'm not missing that.
Thursday, you ready?
Thursday would be better.
A week on Thursday?
The 20th, the 22nd.
Uh, I'm not around on the 22nd, no.
Let's keep that in the back of our head.
I guess the first thing to consider is, is the board ready to, you know, discuss it, or if there's any big outstanding items we need to resolve.
Let's talk about that now. We know we do get some pushback from some of the hydroseeding that didn't quite take, but it's pretty minor. I think we're working on that, and that, that's gonna be done. At this point, I think it's beyond Jurson, it's, it's just certain things that are...
They have, they have a, you know, as, as you know, we have a pretty thick, it's about a, about a two-inch-thick document, it's the contract with, with them. And it spells out what they're required to provide for topsoil and seeding. And as we just said, said a moment ago, they, they've seeded three times.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say you have to provide 100% beautiful lawn everywhere.
Yeah.
I would say they're way beyond this, you know, the 80% coverage everywhere.
And for the record, they came back this last time, and we kind of lucked out a rain 20 days at a 30, so we didn't...
Right, just to, just to make sure, right?
And is that a threshold stated in the contract, the 80%?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's in there. You know, I think you could, you could find an individual lawn out there that probably doesn't meet, you know, the 80%.
I think we'll work on that separately, then. And then on the electrical side, is that done now, or...
There, we're not ready for, you know, to recommend you close them out. There is a payment that's on your, on the way, but as of right now, hasn't arrived.
What do you mean by that?
There's a payment number two. You've, you made payment one number one, which is, you know, I think, out of their contract amount of $111,000, it was like $96,000 in those ranges. So the...
UFC money, is that what you're saying?
No, no, Gross Electric has, has not submitted pay application number two.
Oh, okay.
And pay application number two, I, I've seen the draft copy, is, they're, they're not asking for a final payout either. So we have to process their pay application number two before, and then you go through that same step of adopting a, accepting their project as complete, and then paying their final retainage.
I did get a phone call today from George Pop from USDA, looking for these closing documents. Oh, I'm sorry. George Pop from the USDA, looking for closing documents, and he'd like everything closed out.
Right, and, and as you guys remember this from a while ago, we, we did, the contractual term is called substantial completion, which means the town, the village takes over beneficial use of the work, right? So that, that's, that's, that's been a while.
And the warranties start on the date of substantial completion?
Correct.
I just did say someone would be to him at, by the end of the month with answers, so...
So, so basically, the question is, if they're substantially complete, along, you know, you know, at some point, it becomes, I don't know how many months it's been, probably since October, is there an issue, or why aren't you closing them out, right? Is, is what George is asking.
Well, Jurson was substantially complete, but Gross was not, so...
Correct.
We're fine. The other part too, for those listening and new board members, George Pop is USDA RD, they're the long-term loan, loan funding agency, and, um, we are deliberately waiting for spring to happen, waiting for grass, certain things we did on purpose to make it into June. And one is that, once we do close, we start to pay the principal interest back on the 3.8 million. And it was a deliberate fiscal decision too, to let everything come to fruition construction-wise, and then, once we close, our next big payment will not be till January of 2018. So it's, it's, and that's in our water budget, and then more payments start after that. But anyway, so what do we do? We need, from you, we could, I think we could close out Jurson.
Okay. So I, I can issue, I can issue a draft resolution for you to consider?
As far as Gross, what, what is outstanding?
They have some cleanup, basically. Everything is installed and functioning.
All the controls are in place and up and running, they've all been test-driven, basically.
Right, for, I, you know, I think since about January, so...
And as far as decommissioning the tower, that is part of whose contract?
It's really, it's really more an operational, because it's a matter of closing a valve and opening another one.
So as far as all the structural investigations and inspections on that, it's all sound when and if the water is let go?
Right, just, just to remind a couple people, we did do a complete structural evaluation. Structural engineers climbed the tower and found a few things which were fixed, so that the tower would stay, we could empty it and use it as cell tower. And now we're not, um, you know, just, so everybody knew that it, it didn't require the weight of water for it to not flop over, you know?
All right, so, yeah, if you could draw up the Jurson template, and then, might as well draw up Gross two, then we could act on one first, and then get ready to go.
Yep, um, okay, so we'll move that, ahead with that. And, um, so if anybody else have any questions on the water? I think you still show, when you, when you read the water report, that real substantial water savings is...
Yeah, Charlie, we'll get to that, but a little sneak preview.
You're gonna have to do this every year with these streets, with these radiuses? No, the radiuses are long. People keep cutting across it and everything else?
Hold on, hold, hold... Yeah, hold the question, but we'll answer it, and, um, the drivers are wrong, in my opinion, but anyway. Well, why don't you go to sewer, please?
Yep. So this, on the sewer project, you know, we're getting to the point where, in about a month, we'll be submitting plans and specifications to DEC and EFC, EFC being the funding agency, as well as Rural Development, and to review and approve. That's gonna be a multi-month process. And we'll start generating easement maps, so that's gonna require a lot of, lot of legwork to get, get those easements signed up. So that's the other, that's really the big task of the second half of the year, is getting all those easements signed. I think there's a lot of, you know, you guys, we've, we've talked before, there's a lot of parallel tracks, you know, there's the, the subdivision of the land where the wastewater plant is, turnover to the village, that's all, you know, moving.
None of...
We just got the 41-page draft sewer use law to review, and that was, what, last Friday? So that's, that'll be some fun reading, and that'll have to be adopted as well by this board.
The sewer use law, you know, is sooner than later, I think, would probably be the message there, because you, you've gotta go, go through the text, you know, to have a, you know, work with your attorneys, have the public hearing, you know, tweak the text again.
So that came from the sub-engineer, the subcontracted engineer?
Right.
Could you make sure, I don't remember seeing that come through on my email.
Yeah, okay.
Come on, Friday.
Yeah, I forwarded it to you on Friday, because we were talking about it.
Oh, yeah, not from him, okay. His, his firm, but, okay, I'll look for you.
Yeah, so that, that's an important task that the board's gotta be, obviously has to be on top of, so...
A lot of it's boilerplate DEC, there's maybe 10 pages that are specific to Red Hook, including some of the stuff we've been working on, on the Friday sessions, but, it, it's a good document, so...
Well, you're up to Robert. And Brent, Friday, we took a trip over to Sam Lemon Cahill's office to listen to EFC people, and there's a June 23rd deadline for resubmitting...
So, but, but the, the village has...
We're actually relooking, we're hoping phase two water might get reconsidered, meaning they would do something better for us than the current situation.
The phase two water was financed through a reduced interest loan, but no, no grant component. So you're still, um, because you haven't closed the project out, you're still eligible for this round of funding, which would be, if you get it, it's 60% grant, so...
About 2.1 million?
Six, uh, no, the 3.8.
Of the 3.8?
He's doing the math.
Oh, oh, you already went to the 60%.
Which is nice, and that's one reason we've been...
Been in a rush.
Yeah, like, June is an okay time to close, since June 23rd is the application deadline for that next round, so...
Yep.
So, we're good. That was kind of, you know, we talked to the experts, quote-unquote, the EFC had, what, their president there, and their legal and financials.
At the top of the hierarchy at that meeting, so...
Lobbied a little bit, and...
So at least they were very well aware of both your applications, the sewer project and the, and the water project.
Water, to me, would, like, we know, has a little more benefit, because we have no grant on the water, this would take it, right? Be sweet.
Right.
Then we could reconstruct those radiuses there. What else you got, Robert? How about day-to-day water? I know Charlie read his report, but the number's what, 194 now, 194,000 gallons per...
Yeah, just shy of 200,000. I stole the, stole the thunder, right?
It's just gonna be stuck with the, with the conversation tip of the day.
It's the only thing I get to say, ruining it for me.
Yeah, we've been sweating that for, what, eight years? You've only been here two months.
I've taken ownership of it.
Anyway. Yeah, so we do, we'll see you, are you in town Wednesday for...
Yep.
Friday again. And we'll think about, because she'll need some days to get notice out if we're gonna do a special, but otherwise, it'd be July, which would be, um...
Well, I'd say if, if it hasn't, having to do with water, his schedule should take precedence over mine.
We'll figure it out.
Is it possible to get something drafted before Thursday and circulated?
Sure. Yeah, I don't know if you're, I guess the key question is, is the board ready for it?
Yeah, I, I think I'd rather wait to council, look at it too, not just, you know, like, what you draft, I might throw a few, a couple directions, you know, not just, no criticism of you, but, uh, just...
Okay. Unfortunately, I can't be here Thursday, but you guys can discuss it, but...
All right. Well, thank you, Robert. Let's see. We'll go back to where we normally are, let's go here. Charlie, tonight, we won't do it at the moment, but do you feel Jay's reports are in here? Would you wanna add a little through that while, while I'm talking? If you wanna look at Building Department trustee's report, and then he's got a zoning and planning...
I could read that if...
We won't do it right now, but you can...
Okay.
Start looking. Anyway, police report. From my world, is interacting with the police for the May month 2017. Incident count, 370, breaks out 296 in the village of Red Hook, 71 in the town of Red Hook, three in the village of Tivoli. Traffic tickets issued, 133, breaks out 104 in the village of Red Hook. 16 of those are parking tickets, so we are pushing that a little bit. Town of Red Hook, 29. Arrests were 18. Breakout is nine in the village of Red Hook, nine in the town of Red Hook. Details are attached. Personnel, we are still in negotiations with the police union. We'll go into executive session later, since it's subject to executive session on the details, since it's Taylor Law, collective bargaining stuff, but that is underway. Brent, I think you'll pick up a Red Hook together from last month, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna pick up Red Hook together in your report?
Yeah.
Insurance, Cindy mentioned we paid our premium, we got our package policy renewed.
Some big numbers there, right? There were over what was allocated on the insurance?
No, I saw you circle that on the budget, but just, the other funds have to pay for it.
All right.
Yeah, what Brent's asking is, yeah, but it is, uh, in force, and, uh, we're good. And let's see, trustee trap is away. Charlie, I don't know what you have in front of you yet, but you could do water first, or if you wanted to look at, uh...
Well, no, I've got the monthly zoning and planning report here.
Okay, why don't you go through that?
Sure, so, that's the eight building permits issued. I don't need to list...
No, no.
No. Four certificates of occupancy, four certificates of compliance, three municipal searches, and other issues, there were two complaints, four fire inspections. Let's see, planning board actions, there was a site plan subdivision application for Red Hook Commons, which was tabled to the June 8th meeting. So I guess that happened.
Yep.
Subdivision application for Baxter Road was also tabled to June 8th, and a site plan application for Elizabeth Street was also tabled to June 8th, so I'm assuming those will all be reported on next month. Zoning Board of Appeals, no May 2017 meeting due to nothing on the agenda, I guess. And then a quick summary of the monthly police report totals? Was that something you do?
No, that's me, I did that. If you could, he's got a building report with some dollars as far as...
Building report with some dollars.
It flips to page two, and gives you a little bit of...
Okay.
The totals on the other side.
Right. So this is the Building Department, uh...
It's really just a financial, just a financial report.
Yeah, so total income was $1,000.
Yes, that's right.
For the month of May.
Good, thank you. Yeah, the financial part is just a recap of what you write on the other pages.
Right. And then segue right into the water report?
Drum roll.
Okay, well, you...
I'm gonna make it spicy.
It's all old news. So for May 2017, the water treatment plant treated 6,41,000 gallons of water at an average rate of 194,000 gallons a day, and the plant used... And the plant used fifty-five gallons of liquid hyperchloride at an average rate of one point seven seven gallons per day. And that's compared to May of two thousand sixteen, where the water treatment plant treated seven million six hundred and eleven thousand gallons at an average rate of two hundred and forty-five thousand gallons a day. So this meant a savings of over one and a half million gallons for the year, which represents a decrease of twenty-one percent in the treated water volume. So over the course of the year, this represents nineteen point one million gallon savings. So clearly we're benefiting hugely from those water system improvements.
It's amazing.
They seem to have left off some, you know, nice tip on conservation.
I told them today, leave off the tips for this week. Some of them are getting a little, like, what would you say, farmer's almanac-ish?
I was getting rather fond of them. I'm going to ask to have that reinstated.
Turn the water off when you brush your teeth?
Yeah.
Something like that.
You know, don't shave so often.
Anyway, thank you, Charles, Charlie. We could, why don't we let Jen Norris go to work?
All right, events, we had our bike rodeo, I don't have a date. June something, June sixth, there you go. Thanks so much to Officer Wilson and the Red Hook Police Department. We absolutely could not have done it without him. He provided about twenty free tune-ups and gave out seven free bike helmets to kids. We also did this in coordination with the town where they did the tour to Red Hook, but I don't think we had a lot of takers for that one, unfortunately. But it was still a great day, so we hope to do that every year. We're still working on having concerts this summer. We're working on one that might need to be rescheduled, that's in the works. But we will have our annual community concert in Potluck on August twelfth at five P M. With Grass Fed, that takes place at Abrams Park. More details as we get closer. Hardscrabble Day, we've been working on that Saturday, September sixteenth. For vendor applications, go to hardscrabbleday.org. Something new we're trying this year, we want people to really walk around and take advantage of our merchants. So we're going to try to place some vendors at Memorial Park and also Key Bank Lawn to try to get people out and moving. And if people want spots at Memorial Park or Key Bank Lawn, it will be cheaper than our normal vendor rate, which would be for the main stretch. Let me bounce real quick. This comes out every spring. This is the town summer program list. If you have a child in the Red Hook schools, the majority, if not all, of these programs are free. There's basketball, volleyball, field hockey, summer rec camp, tennis, softball, you name it, it's here. And it's a fantastic resource. So make sure that if you are a parent, you look into that. The Red Hook Library also has lots of programs and camps going on this summer. You can check out their website or their calendar at the circulation desk. Community outreach, the town of Red Hook Senior Services Committee is once again assisting Community Action Partnership in collecting non-perishable food items for our disadvantaged students to eat over the summer when school meals are not available. They did have a food drive this past weekend, but are continuing to gather more supplies. You can drop it off at Community Action. The only thing is, please let them know that it is specifically earmarked for the Red Hook students. Also, for the same Red Hook students, there's a Stuff the Emuence food drive with the Northern Duchess, sorry, NDP, Emergency Medical Services hosting food drive to support summer food backpack program that will be this Saturday, June seventeenth, from nine to four at Tops. And then what everyone's been waiting for, materials management, which is almost as exciting as your water conservation tips, but not quite.
Very, very close.
For the month of May, we sold four thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents in garbage tags and paid out one thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. We had seven point two-two tons of single stream recycling and twelve point oh-six tons of garbage. June is our last month for the buy ten, get one free tag sales going on. You buy ten blue or ten red and you get one free that's only here, not at the other places where the tags are sold. In July, unfortunately, our rates do need to go up. We are now being charged for single stream recycling, which we hadn't been. So to offset that, and also just, we haven't raised rates in a very long time.
Eight to ten years, yeah.
So they're only going up a little bit. It'll be two dollars and seventy-five cents for blue tags and five dollars and fifty cents for red tags. And that's it.
Thank you, just to go back to Hardscrabble Day.
Yes.
It is September sixteenth, and like Jen said, she's working on some new efforts to get some, a few more merchants, off-site merchants involved in vendor booths. But then on the positive side too, we're looking to get a theme conveyed out. The bands we're booking this year are, we can announce it here, but not in our formal, like, advertising, advertising. It's Art Neville and the Funky Meters, and then a band that rides with them a little bit, the New Orleans Suspects. So it's like a Louisiana Cajun, not Cajun, but a funk Louisiana, really, really good music. And so we're thinking we might get, we are going to get a letter out to our street merchants and pick on that theme of, you know, Louisiana, New Orleans meets Red Hook. So we're crafting a letter to get them to offer specials, whether it be meals or discounts for certain types of retail items, things like that. And then I'm going to, Toy, I think we'll do a little pitch and the board's welcome, but I think we'll rename Prince Street or something to Bourbon Street, something fun to get a little PR, something like we did years ago with the Abbey Road and the Beatles band that we had here. We could start a rumor we had the Beatles play here, right? But, um, let's see, but I think it'll be fun, so we have a few months yet to work on that. We'll probably do that pitch late August, early September. But anyway, it should be a good time on that. And then back to materials management, two things, that's a pretty good month in sales tags. Could be your ten percent promotion, working some cash flow there, but it's good to see. And then we did get something the board should think about. I got a complaint over the weekend where we move our village residents' yard waste to a local farmer. People were complaining about a smoke odor in the neighborhood and drifting. We've been researching it. Our goal is to compost and chip as much as we can, and people can't, just can't do it on their relatively small village lots, including the leaves. So we're going to look into it a little bit, and I don't know, I think farmers are entitled to also, if they trim and move their own field edge wood and so forth, they can burn in accord with DEC timelines and different things. So we'll be looking at that if anybody on the board hears anything. We were made aware of it and we're going to look at it more. But this was a process we started maybe four or five years ago, where we bring it to the farmer. And the concept is, we're actually taking the biomass and then composting, recycling it as best we can. So we'll look at what's going on there. Thank you, Jen. Mr. Deputy Mayor Kowalczek, would you like to go?
Yep. I'll start with the Village Green monthly report for May two thousand seventeen. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, we have one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents remaining. Shade tree contractual, we have a balance of five hundred and fifty dollars. Most of the budget line was spent removing trees already. We have a big list of trees to be pruned and removed in some emergency situations. So we're pretty, pretty close to emptying that for the last fiscal year. The Village Green Committee checking account is four thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. There were no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of May. We sent out probably a dozen responses, notifications to property owners that we will be either pruning or removing trees on their properties or actually on village right-aways. And we did receive no responses regarding appeals to the letters. We did get one, happy to let you remove our tree letter. So that was a good sign. And the Village Green officers are urged to consider tree planting sites for the annual fall planting. These are to be discussed at upcoming Village Green Committee meetings. And we want to get a little head start on planning for the fall. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report for the month of May two thousand seventeen. The Village Highway Department is picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month as their schedules permit. Sometimes there is an emergency situation or something comes up where they have to postpone it. Residents are reminded to place the lawn debris curbside in separate piles and separate the brush, lawn debris and grass clippings in different piles. And please start the debris out of sight until the scheduled pickup dates to prevent conflicts with other village services such as materials management and water, and also to keep the streets clean and free of debris. And we ask that you limit the size of these piles to six feet by six feet by six feet with tree limbs and branches no larger than eight inches in diameter. Dave's Tree Service, one of the contracts, and with the assistance of the Village Highway Department, has begun the pruning and removal of trees in or near village street right-aways. And we had already discussed where the funding's coming from, and we waited for the remainder of those trees to be removed until the new fiscal year started. The village received the consolidated local street and highway improvement apportionment. This is the CHIPS budget line balance from the New York State DOT on April twenty-first. The Red Hook Village Trustees will verify the current fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen CHIPS budget line and make sure it complies with the New York State DOT apportionment. So we can do that, just check on that when we do our budget adjustments. And just a reminder for our neighbors, in Tivoli, the bridge on County Route seventy-eight, which is Broadway, is to be replaced beginning May. I think work is already begun. Work is expected to continue through the summer, with a new bridge opening by early fall two thousand seventeen. Scrap metal was sold on May fifth for two hundred ninety-three dollars and forty cents. The total revenue generated for fiscal year two thousand sixteen and seventeen is three thousand twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. We had anticipated two thousand dollars, so we're pretty good, fifty percent over what we've done on that. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of two thousand seven, twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-seven cents has been generated. And the proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Materials Management Departments. And residents or businesses interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Village Clerk's Office or the Highway Department at seven five eight eight six hundred. And the Highway Department personnel will assist by picking up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force and the Red Hook Infrastructure monthly report for May two thousand seventeen, Robert touched on some highlights, but I'll go a little bit more detail on a lot. The real big detail will be on the monthly report, and this is online, if, for those who are interested in really the down and dirty aspects of what we do. Meetings were held on May fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-sixth in the Red Hook Village Building. And we discussed the following. On May fifth, we had stakeholders' meetings with private individuals. I believe one, two, three individuals came in that missed the informational meetings that we had, specific to those properties in the service area. And so we were able to talk to them about the costs and the scope of work and what's associated with the project and how it would affect their properties. Tom Fields from Ryan Biggs Clark Davis Engineering Surveying continued to assist the village to draft the proposed Red Hook Village Sewer Law. And again, we just got that Friday, the forty-one page document that we'll be reviewing. The Village Board passed Resolution thirteen two thousand seventeen. And this resolution ratified the MAP Planner Report. And it is still seeking approval by the New York State Commissioner of Health, and this is currently being processed to satisfy Section fourteen dash fourteen hundred of the New York State Village Law. We're coming pretty close to hopefully resolving this, but we've been discussing this with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York State Department of Health, and the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to secure approval of the MAP Planner Report. And this is basically something that's listed in the law. It's not a hurdle, it's just a formality that we're trying to get resolved. The Village of Red Hook submitted the Red Hook Sewer Project to the New York State Environmental Facility Corporation Project Listing and Update System on May fifth. And this submission updated the application necessary for funding from the EFC Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And this is separate from the grant applications that we'll be sending in on the twenty-third. On April twenty-sixth, Robert Flores inspected the existing Red Hook Commons electrical power supply capacity and emergency generator. An additional generator will be added to the expanded treatment plant as part of the sewer project Phase One. The existing power supply was deemed sufficient to provide electrical capacity to the expanded treatment plant. On May twelfth, at Blundell, Robert Flores and myself met with U.S. Congressman John Fassom in the Red Hook Village Building. We were asking his support to continue the funding for the USDA Rural Development and US State, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant programs. That was a nice meeting, actually. Temporary construction easements and permanent maintenance easements, as Robert Flores had briefly touched upon, are being prepared for individual property owners within the sewer project service area by Rottenhausen Shaw. And on the Red Hook Water Project, Robert touched on some of the main things, but we did have a meeting on May fifth to finalize the work on Phase Two with our prime general contractor, Jersey Construction, so the project manager, and the job captain and the engineer, and I attended that. And we're just, we had some little, little punch list items to attend with. Most of it was the repair of the topsoil. Council Landscaping did help us, helped the Village Highway Department with the topsoil. And Jersey provided the hydro seeding. And we had a little pair, repair on the blacktop, I guess one of the, the back, I don't know what it's called, but it's... A mud flap fell off, it got run over during paving, so it left an imprint. And it was embedded in, so we had to dig that up and repave that section, so that's kind of a fluke. Change Order One with Gross Electric, that was also discussed with Robert. And that was pretty much on the water. So we're focusing most of our times on Fridays with the sewer project. The two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant, this is for the new sidewalk at Firehouse, at the Firehouse and the reconstruction of the sidewalk in front of Coburn's Laundry. And we've been trying to resolve the funding. So we've, correspondence has been going back between the Village of Red Hook, CT Mayo, and Duchess County Department of Planning and Development to resolve the final payment issues. On the two thousand seventeen Community Development Block Grant, the county executive announced an award of two hundred thousand dollars to a joint application by the town and village of Red Hook for the construction of Challenger Field at the Red Hook Recreation Park West. Challenger Field is an adaptive baseball field with synthetic infields and accessible dugouts for individuals with physical and intellectual challenges. So that was a nice program that we got funding for. The fiscal year, the federal fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-one Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, the Village of Red Hook was notified from Duchess County Transportation Council that the prioritized listing of federally funded transportation projects in Duchess County has been amended to include a new sidewalk and ADA improvements in the Village of Red Hook. And I believe I just got another attachment today to go into more detail. The village is also considering to apply for two grants through Round Seven of the Consolidated Funding Application. One will be for possible land annexation funded by the New York Main Street Program, and the other for improvements to the Red Hook Municipal Parking Lot funded by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Green Infrastructure Grant Program. So we're still looking at that, haven't made any decisions. It's looking, looking tough for us to meet some of the things, but we always look for money wherever we can. On the intermunicipal task force side, we meet every Friday. I think we've been meeting for the last thirteen years. The task force met on May fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth in the Red Hook Town Hall. And we discussed the Upper Red Hook Hamlet Business District, specifically focusing on residential home occupations and signage specific to the Hamlet Business District and the Town of Red Hook sign regulations. specific to the Hamlet Business District and the Town of Reddick sign regulations. Some of the other various committees, the Reddick Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaisons for the Village of Reddick. EDC meetings were held on May tenth and twenty-fourth in the Reddick Village Building. And we had a report on the status of the Reddick Sewer Project. The EDC is trying to promote a wider organization utilization of the EDC community calendar. And we discuss perceived trends and strategies for sustainable small retail and service businesses in the village and town of Reddick. On May twenty-fourth, the EDC invited members from the Reddick Rotary Club to discuss lessons learned regarding the two thousand seventeen Apple Blossom Festival. As some may remember, it was very damp. So on the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, I'm a member of that. There were no CPF Advisory Board meetings held during the month of May. The current balance of the CPF as of May thirty-first is eight hundred and eight thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. The Salt Hill Watershed Community Monthly Report. The Salt Hill Watershed Community Meeting was held on May seventeenth at the Reddick Town Hall. Marco Spodak, Bard College Class of two thousand seventeen, presented nitrate loading in the Salt Hill Watershed, focusing on forest farms and developed lands in the town and village of Reddick. Kyle Feldman, also Bard College Class of two thousand seventeen seventeen, presented water security in the Village of Reddick, focusing on groundwater and surface water quality in the village. And he actually tagged along with our village engineer to do some of the testing of our subsurface wells. We did eleven test wells to test the quality of the water, of the aquifer, and the effects of substandard septicants. And he had a, came up with some conclusions on his own. And we also discussed at the Salt Hill Watershed Community Meeting, Apple Blossom Day, and the watershed assessment updates. There's a Salt Hill Watershed and Flood Mitigation Assessment. I just sent Ed, you can send it along if they want, but a draft version of what was talked about. A kickoff conference call was held on May ninth. The Village of Reddick did support a grant to enlist Fuss in O'Neill to study places within the Salt Hill Watershed that may be problem spots for flooding in areas where infrastructure, primarily culverts and bridges, has changed since the last FEMA hydraulic study. Very few locations in the village that are affected by this study. Reddick Together, Ed and I are both members. Ed was able to attend the meeting on the May eleventh at the Village Building. I guess one of the big focus discussions was about the New York State Library and the Reddick Public Library are now offering audiobooks and equipment for vision impaired residents. The Senzio Foundation is currently investigating options to transport senior citizens from Reddick Commons to the Reddick Community Center for programming. That's a nice effort. The TIC Project, the Cary Institute of Ecosystem Study in partnership with Bard College and the Reddick Conservation Advisory Council, is currently researching treatments that may be used to prevent tick-borne diseases. Using data from Duchess County neighborhoods with particularly high numbers of Lyme cases per capita have been identified. Several neighborhoods in the Village of Reddick are included in the study. I think my neighborhood, there's a lot of people involved on that. I think you're involved, I'm involved. Treatments such as bait boxes and sprays known to be safe for people, pets, and the environment are being used in the study. Residents who are included in the study have agreed to have their properties used specifically for this study. The Village to Village Trail Committee Stakeholders Meeting was held on May twelfth in the Reddick Town Hall. The original plan developed by Altha Design has been reformatted to be more usable and readable. Updates on the grant, providing funding for this trail, were also reviewed. And comments from various stakeholders from the Town of Reddick and Villages of Reddick and Tivoli have been incorporated. The V two V will connect the Village of Tivoli, Bard College Campus, and the Village of Reddick with bike and hiking paths and trails. Maps, signage, trail markers and information kiosks are being designed and proposed. Locations are currently being considered. And we'll, you'll be seeing some what they call charros on a stretch of Church Street from West Market to Prince Street. These are arrows kind of designating bike lane traffic. And then some more coming up Prince Street between Church Street and South Broadway, leading to the, one of the destination, the destination of the village will be the kiosk, where we do have a bike rack and there'll be a map of the trail system hung on that information kiosk. I think that's it.
Good, thank you. Just while we had you on the floor there, a couple of things. You mentioned the FAST grant and all the acronyms here, the Duchess County Transportation Council. We did stamp in a letter today, which you seem to be referring to as well. I reached out to Mark DeBald, he's the Program Administrator, it says here. But, but they do list, this is where we had the eighty-eight thousand, that was block grant money rolled to DOT money. And this looks to be confirming, they give it a bunch of numbers. Brent mentioned one, another PIN number, P I N number. I did call him, I'm just trying to find out a timeline. They say it's in the project, the TIP project listings and so forth. But have you heard anything in any of your correspondences?
Usually they publish a list of, you know, short-term, medium-term, long-term projects. And I would assume that this would be in the short term, but we can verify that. And it's not for public hearing right now, so.
So I reached, late this afternoon, I reached out to him, but to his, he couldn't have gotten back to me by the time of the meeting. But overall, that's good. And on the TIC program, Brent did say it, but it's, it's a program with coordination with the Cary Institute. And it's voluntary by residents who specifically requested to be involved. It was nothing that the village gave blank, carte blanche to people to, to participate. It's just they got approached directly by scientists. And Cindy did some proactive research, because we were getting some calls. They do put that required pesticide yellow flag in your lawn. And it turns out it's a bio-type product. They use a spore, it was MET fifty-one, if I remember, fifty-two. It's really, you might remember like the milky spore and the gypsy moth. It's really like a parasite type thing that would attack the, whatever egg is. You know, that precursors, the life cycle of a tick, so.
Yeah, but I think not everybody gets it, nobody knows what they have.
It's blind and they do, they have test boxes and things. But so it's not in of itself a chemical agent, it's biological type controls.
This is something we, my household researched too, because there was some concern about.
Because the flags were a little bit misleading too, like they were, but we did resolve that. The other thing came up since Brent did his report. Friday last week, I got a text from the Highway Department, and they were showing me some photos of used heavier dump trucks. So I wrote back saying, are we in the market? And it turns out they were decommissioning to clean up the big heavy wing plow truck we use that has its own sander box now. And we have been over the years working it to its limits. It's a nineteen ninety-six International, as I recall. But when they took the sander off, unfortunately, I think they were pretty much aghast too. The framing and certain members are not in good shape. They've offered, they sent me more photos, and I will go over and look at it. But it does look like it's near the end. We have that surplus market option, I asked them what they thought we might be able to get. The engine's still good, a few things are still okay. But it's sort of an unforeseen, well, not totally unforeseen, but we're trying to limp through. It's not our heaviest used truck, but they showed me a rather whimsical photo of what could happen if, if the frame decided to fold while it's loaded with, I think, sixteen tons of product. I forget, maybe you guys don't.
Six yards, so it's, you know, five, five to six tons. But it's, the frame is just, it's amazing.
So we could take a field trip, take a look at it. And but apparently it's like a double rail and the two rails, like they're folded in a unitized thing, and they're totally cut apart and all rusted, so. And it's not going to snow for six months at least, so we have some time. But we have to put our creative thinking on and see what, what our options are. It might be, you know, a combination of CHIPS money and a couple of different things. But it's something, we're not going to decide tonight. And we all, I'm going to go look at it for sure, and others can roam over too, if you wanted to come.
Yeah, I saw it last Friday morning, and it was.
Yeah, I got the text, I didn't know what it was at first, I was like, what? But anyway, those are three just follow-ups on your world, Brent. Let's see, we could slip now to regular business. We did our water and sewer updates, we did our panda updates, Reddick Fire Department updates. We don't have the folks here tonight, and primarily because we have essentially resolved the financial side of the situation. They sent us a letter, which I circulated to all you, I think it was dated June one. Essentially, they've come to a point where they would match the request they asked of the Town of Reddick, which is essentially what we were looking for all along. We had some secondary conditions, which were, we need to time the contract negotiation session at the same calendar time as town and village work together. And we need to talk to them about more communication and creating more compliance with what's called Article ten of the Reddick, of New York State Village Law. We put that in our letter to them and asked for a meeting. I wouldn't expect them to come tonight to talk about those issues. Those would be more one-on-one discussions. But overall, it's good, I think that the financial part is behind us. And I did want to go on the record, and I think those that attend regularly know this, but it's very important that we state, we never stopped paying them. We pay them the annual costs per prior agreements. We pay and we buy their volunteer fireman benefits law, which is essentially workers' comp. We buy, wrong where we invest, and we comply with the low SAP requirements here. And it's, all those dollars never stopped flowing, the process never stopped flowing. And like we said at the last meeting, it took us four years, but we paid off the debt we owe them from prior years, prior to these administrations, anybody sitting here in, in their current roles. And we, we got that all paid off, so overall, all good. But we do need to sit with them and create, we're not talking every two years, going at head-to-head, and then disappearing for two years. I'm going to suggest to them that they provide us, like the police department, something with call count, you know, fire, ambulance issues they might help have. And I use the word help, but I think we can bring energy and help by working with them, not, not always just come together once every two years, so. But we did, in my response, like you all know, say, this part is resolved, but we need to have a meeting still on these other parts. But those are a little softer, so to speak, they're more technical slash legal.
This memo, Ed, who's the author of this?
Which one are you looking at there? Oh, what I circulated, trustee Trapp couldn't be here tonight. So if there were audience members in positions, he wanted to have his position readable out to the audience, but.
It's from Jay then.
Yeah, but you all have a copy of that. Essentially, it was in sync with what I just said. That's the update, so there is more work, and we'll have to remind them of another meeting. It could segue us to low SAP review. Cindy has a packet here, I'll grab it from you. It was stamped in by us, May twenty-two. It contains from the fire company paperwork that's required and for Charlie and all of us. The way low SAP works, it's the members, the volunteer members of the fire department accrue points by attending fire calls, training, drills, meetings. And they have to build themselves up over fifty points in a calendar year. It's all monitored and recorded at their side, by their people, by themselves. Then they have to send, well, they develop a list themselves, which I have in front of me, and I can circulate to the board. It gives all the members and by name, and then those that made it by color and so forth, that you can see here. Essentially, about twenty-one or twenty-two made enough points. And then we work with investment companies that take and invest the funds on their behalf. And this is all subject to audit and different things. And it's been, it's a voter-approved program, maybe what, five or eight years ago, the town and the village of Reddick and everybody proved that it's not, it's not just the village doing it. It's, the town does contribute to this on that seventy-five slash twenty-five prorated basis, as far as when the costs are developed. So what they do, we'd never, we budget for it, but we never really know what it will actually hit us as, because you never know how many folks will actually qualify. So now we have the list. So what they do is they post it, an internally, they can look and say, hey, Joe qualified, but I didn't. You know, they can check themselves that way. They've done that, and they've signed a form that they've done that. Then we have the right to review it, so there's a form for us. And it's all according to Article eleven A of New York State General Misfit Law. It requires that a list of volunteers who earned a year of service credit be certified under oath by the fire department and submit to the program sponsor, who is us, by March thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. That's why I mentioned that we didn't get it to May twenty-two. So we can still deal with it, it's just it pushes us into another fiscal year, but it's still all doable. The program sponsor must then review and approve the listing. And then the board, that's us, must sign this form. Once, once the certified two thousand sixteen firefighter records listing has been reviewed and approved, once signed, the entire two thousand sixteen data request package should return to the fire department. So the approved certified listing can be posted for at least thirty days as required by eleven A. So I'll pass this to you. There's another form for me to sign, says, this form is to be signed by the mayor of the Village of Reddick after the two thousand sixteen firefighter records has been posted for thirty days as certified by completion. Please sign and return the entire two thousand sixteen data request package to Penflex. That's the company we deal with for the fund investment. Overall, it's like a version of a 401K. The, it's not defined benefits, it's defined contribution. And it's based on what, what they, what time they put in. So looking at it, you know, Cindy and I looked through it and just, I'll pass it up and down. But the folks in red did not make the point scoring, the ones in black did. It makes sense to me, so, but to comply, we should all look at it. And as we do some other stuff, I'll pass it that way and come back down.
And you have to sign the little form.
Yeah, once they all look at it, and then if, if any questions. Let's see, while we're doing that, we had something a little less complicated. I was contacted by folks that work with the Clearwater Organization. And the boat is going to do a sail to recreate something they did back in nineteen seventy. They're going to sail down to Washington, D.C., which sounds pretty interesting. You have to go down to Chesapeake Bay and back up. So they're, they're looking for local support to take with them to Washington, a resolution that would support their efforts to further clean up the Hudson River and acknowledge Clearwater for work they've done so far. I have no problem, I think we circulated it to all you guys. We gave it a resolution number eighteen. Essentially, the whereas sections talk of the history of Pete Seeger and Clearwater, and that pollution issues still exist. Then it moves toward that there is a threat that the federal government might be dropping EPA funding and certain things. And it goes in accord with the meeting we had with the congressman that certain federal programs are very important to the Village of Reddick and its residents. And this would be one of them, since we border the river and it lends to our economy and our health. And it's part of our history. To me, the important part is, unless somebody wants to read the entire set of wherazes, it cites the river and then the implications of drinking water, which is pretty near and dear to our heart. Essentially, it said, the Sloop Clearwater will carry a message to Washington, deliver it to federal officials, documenting the broad-based concerns of citizens, public interest groups, municipal and state officials throughout New York about growing threats to our water and to federal clean water protections and the need for sound, science-based water policy. I would like the board to consider voting in favor of this. So the resolution says, therefore be resolved that the Village of Reddick hereby registers its deep concern over current rollbacks and threats to federal clean water protections as described above, affirms the need for sound, science-based water policy, and for adequate regulation enforcement and funding as pressure on water quality and safety continued to mount. We also wish to express our support for the effort Clearwater is leading to carry our, carry our concerns and concerns of many New Yorkers for clean water and other environmental protections directly to Washington. I would offer that as a motion and ask for a second so we could discuss it.
Second.
So we got Blondell, we got Koalcheck, this discussion, I think, as I've mentioned, I think it's worth. This discussion, um, I think, as I've mentioned, I think it's worth it. And I think they're actually leaving relatively soon with this, so I think they, I'd like to vote on it tonight.
I think, like you said, some of these things did, we did discuss with our congressman, specifically the funding. Some of the programs that we directly benefit from for both the water and the sewer projects, that specifically helps smaller municipalities and those closer to the Hudson River.
Yes, I think it's, um, in conjunction with it, there's a letter, the resolution is more to document our support of the trip and the carrying of concern to Washington. Then there's a letter we could send directly to EPA and carbon copy FASO, talking about our actions and our concerns. The letter we could do as a motion, but the resolution is actually worded as a resolution. So we had a motion, some, a second and some discussion. Any other thoughts, discussion? We'll call it two. Vote then. I would vote yes. Kowalcheck.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Norris.
Yep.
And trustee Trapp is absent, so thank you. As far as the letter, this could be a little less formal, but, um, it captures a lot of the wording from the resolution. But like I said, it's designed to be more internal communication to the department itself, EPA and the congressman's office. So what I crafted it as written to the EPA, carbon copy to the congressman's office. But it essentially says, "We need EPA, we can't have them cut thirty-one percent of the funding. We need, uh, grants for state water protection programs and certain eliminations would do nothing but hurt us." And that's certainly the case. So I would entertain a motion that the letter dated June twelfth to the US EPA be acknowledged and the mayor be authorized to sign it. And it looks like I can actually have lines for all of you to sign it if you'd like to sign it. But I would put that as a motion that we re, review it again and sign it and send it off. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I have it here, uh, all in favor. So I'll go ahead and sign it and I'll pass it around. I'll go that way. Is this coming back to me? Can I give this, do you want that or do you have your own?
I have mine.
What else we have here, Cindy? Let's see. So we've got. I think what we'll do, let's switch to phase two of public comment for our longstanding trusted attendees who tough it out every week, every month. They now know the drill. He's headed for the microphone. For public comment, just in case nobody knows who you are, Mr. George.
George Beekman, resident of the village, chairman of the ZBA. Also, I want to just point out, I've been at the meetings here, missed, I think, two or three meetings in the last twenty years. So.
Good man.
When Panda started, obviously, the people that were there had no clue. They admitted it. It was originally equipment given to the school, the high school, for the kids to operate as a public service or public, you know, information thing or whatever. They did it for a year or two. It wasn't bad, but nobody, I'm sure nobody watched it. Uh, and originally it was free. And somehow they snuck in money at one point, but they started charging. And if you look at what they've spent with five municipalities throwing money at them for twenty years or so, over a million dollars, which has disappeared, obviously, used up. And for what they got now, for, for a million dollars, it's a joke. I don't care what they say about, there's been one or two shows on there. The Spirit St. Louis one was good. It was on the drag, the racers that were down at the fairgrounds in, back in the sixties. It was well-produced. Obviously, they didn't do it. But other than that, I see no redeeming value to it. And I didn't want to bring up with, with the hysterical group that was here because they were going about to lose it, comparing it with giving up a treaty or something like that. You know, these, these are the crazy progressives. They're just out of their minds. There's no point in it. And I'd like the village to take a stand and tell them, you know, if you want to come here and do it for free because it's public access, I mean, you can come in here, it's a public meeting, no problem with that. But I can't see no reason why we should spend any more money because it's, it's to the point where it's defrauding the public. It's a misuse of public funds. That's my opinion. Now, if you had polled the audience of two, you would have got the same thing, would have been unanimous. Get rid of it. Don't want it. Nobody watches it. I don't watch it because I'm here.
But one thing, one thing I'm not.
You want to participate, you've got to be here.
Right.
If you're not here, watching on TV is like watching a commercial over and over again. What point is it?
The point, but you did make one admission that you do watch Spirit St. Louis and what was the other one?
I caught one or two.
Fire shows.
Yeah.
So I don't know, we might have you on, under oath here, buddy.
That's no problem, but it's not worth a million dollars or six thousand or twelve thousand a year, whatever it's bouncing around. You know, a kid would, any kid with a high-definition VHS recorder, VHS, that's talking about old, DVD, DVR, something like that, uh, could do the better job than they're doing. The audio in a lot of cases like this is, a lot of people won't come here because they won't stand up there and talk to you with their back to the camera, no less stand up here with a microphone. So you chased everybody out. And I warned them when they first came out with putting this on the air. You're going to get rid of the people and there they are. On average, you've got two people, sometimes one. So to say this is doing a public service is at best a joke and at worst a lie. I'd like to see the board grow a pair and say, you know, we're going to go with plan B. If you want to come in here and tape it, you're free to do it, but we're not going to pay for it.
Thank you, George.
That's it.
Some we won't editorialize on, but thank you. Don, do you have anything?
No, we were just discussing the radius.
Okay, yeah, bring that back up. Yeah, it, it's, it's a problem, but they were deliberately designed to be, why don't you ask your question? And they might not have heard the question.
Yeah, the radius is about the roads.
Yeah, what Don's talking about, you're a truck driver too, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
In the phase-two water project, we deliberately narrowed the roads and then pulled the radiuses in. So it's a little more deliberative to make the turn. I'll use the word deliberative. And we're seeing, for whatever reason, folks in some corners are ignoring the curb and just deciding that the lawns are now part of the highway, the roadway, wrong word, street. But I think it was a composite of like three issues over the winter. I think that's where you had, one was, um, with the recent seeding in the fall, it hadn't really settled in. And this winter was not a real good freeze, then-snow winter. It was warm ground, snow, so any plows that touched the newly dimensioned roads, if they went wide, they were pulling into unfrozen, recently-installed topsoil. So it was a little tough. But we did work with the contractor to bring them into some of that repair. And then the radius itself, I think our message to the public is the side streets are really not cut-throughs. You know, it's, um, in my opinion, it should be, if you live on a street, you drive on a street. You don't come through to go, uh, beat the light or whatever. So we're trying to tamp that down. And, um, I know at one of our meetings, the engineer told us that we actually reduced by two-point-five acres the edge of road and put this green infrastructure, better drainage. And I can see it now with the rains of the, those last twenty days. What used to be rivers of wash coming down the edge of Garden Street toward Benner are now diminished, I would say, by at least fifty percent. It's more of a gentle flow coming down because most of it's designed to go off the edges. And in the corners, we, it's designed, we do have one or two, we fixed one. I think Brent might have skipped over it when he was reading, but the end of Phillips. Some of the green infrastructure got crushed there, um, because of school.
The soil got compacted, so the infiltration down didn't work, so we replaced.
We had a lake there.
Topsoil with some gravel.
But the diagnosis was that in the soft phase, so many kids get driven to school at middle school. The parents back up and park on the street edge there and they packed it down. So we broke out with about a two-foot strip and put item four-type gravel there and it's working fine now. We have a little problem down the end of Prince here. We're trying to figure out. But it's, overall, that's draining well. It's just not to the immediate timeline satisfaction of a couple of people, but seems good. Other than that.
Yeah, and when you formed this district and that for the sewer and that, what was the reason for that? Why did you form it? Was it, you know, the voters aren't going to get to vote on this, right?
We didn't form a district by virtue of village law. The entire village is the district.
Yes, but what's.
So what we did was designate a service area. And so the service area was primarily the general business district that we have. So it's basically the same as last time, but foreshortened down to Red Hook Commons. So the last time it went all the way down to Hanford.
Yeah, but the last time, the people got to vote on it.
And that was a part county sewer district, so we are operating with county law, municipal law for counties.
Well, we call the county and the county.
All right, George? Well, I could, let me finish up.
This is.
And the county wouldn't accept this system.
What do you mean they wouldn't accept it?
It's, what backup have you got?
No, no, we already went through that with DOH and who you guys spoke with and we spoke with as supervisor. And, um, it's fine.
If I could jump in, on your bigger question, um, what you have is the village is a district and then this is phase one of an attempt to eventually do the entire village. And the key factor is that no general village residents paying for this, except the ones that are the benefited users. So somebody in Garden Street is not paying an increase in any shape or form. It's just those particular property owners. And the big answer is that in our determination, the, the funding is available and the village's vitality and viability would totally be in question if we didn't do this. Is if you look, if you went on the drone and looked down on the village center, there's no way to develop and have an economy there with septic. And I don't think one could even define them as septics from eighteen eighty to nineteen forty. You know, it's, it's just, and we've already seen, quite frankly, really positive news. Some tenants are looking and we've got some really exciting things going on because they know the sewer's coming in. And we've actually got some concession, when you mentioned county, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but we sat with them and said, "Look, in two years, this will be live." And right now, let's not penalize tenants and landlords that can get some real good, exciting action here. And we've got some good news on that, you know, you'll be hearing it soon. But, uh, it's going to make it so much more can happen there instead of a lot of dead stores trying to, restaurants in particular, trying to make money on not enough seats, you know, and it's, um, so it'll be good.
One quick question.
Yeah.
Easy one. Is there, my neighbor asked me to ask you, is there any plans to pave Cherry Street in the near future?
Well, let's see, we have, I saw CHIPS, there was a lot of catch basin work over in Amherst and over there.
Yeah, we have some, we're looking at the CHIPS. We have an allocated amount from the state. And so we usually try to compile a list of projects to do.
Yeah, well, the concern is he wants to fix his driveway, work on it, level it because it's sinking in one section. And he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to spend money to make it drain properly. And then you guys come in and change the configuration of the street in any way, the height, which would change drainage, drainage he sets up.
Cherry Street seems to be in pretty good shape. There's not too many problems.
Yeah, okay. I just wondered if there was anything on the agenda. I said I'd ask. I said it'd be on Panda. Maybe he'll watch it. I don't know.
Phase three, if, you know, if we could get some funding, you know, that part would be phase three, but that'll be years away.
Yeah, no problem. I just said I would ask.
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
Nothing immediate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one general business thing. I sent something off to David Groth and I don't recall if we circulated it to the board yet, but we got a letter received June fifth from Tectonic, who's a service company to Verizon. They're looking at, um, where we own our wellfields over here. They call it a, they think it's suitable for installation of a small cell antenna. It sounds, um, it would enhance the existing Verizon wireless network in the area. And, um, they don't name any specific dollars or anything. They say, um, it's, it's called a rooftop antenna facility. So it sounds some sort of a repeater or something that's not as involved or big as what we have on the water towers. So we tasked David Groth to look into it and see what they're talking about. But if you hear anything about that, um, we are further evaluating it. We've not made any commitments. And, um, it looks like David Groth should get back to me in a day or two and see what, you know, we could talk about it at the workshop or something, if, if it's worth anything. Could be a revenue source and if it's a spot that works.
Is it for the wellfield?
Yeah, it talks about, um, small cell antenna facility for utility pole. And somehow they picked tax parcel with the village wellfield.
Couple of other people might have got that letter too.
Anyway, other than that, that's all I have. Anybody else on the board want to talk anything up? I think, folks, if it's okay, we've had a long night. We could executive session forego, put the words in right order, forego the executive session. We could, um, do that Thursday night. Nothing really crucial. I plan to meet with the police union Friday again, so we can talk about it Thursday night. Other than that. We need to make a motion to pay May thirty-one bills and June twelve bills. So I would entertain it like a two-fold motion to both packets. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, um, Mr. Brent, you want to go for it?
I can make a motion. Do we adjourn this evening's meeting?
I'll second it. And it looks like it's nine-ten. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thanks, cameraman.